I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer, here.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Tipp.
Here.
I have number four, approval of the minutes. I'll accept the motion. Uh, most, I'm sorry, motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting for August 6th, 2018. I accept the motion to approve.
Mayor, I make the motion with two minor adjustments that I'll need to the clerk later.
You want to get from it? You didn't write it up?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, if, if everybody would like to hear them, on the first page, under the first communications billing increase, uh, there's a reference to the seventy-seven dollars made to set cost differential. Uh, that amount that was, uh, eaten by First Communications was not a monthly increase. It was a one-time increase, uh, in cost. So I was asking that monthly be strippeded from there. The other difference, uh, or change that I was requesting was that the meeting adjourned at nine fourteen PM, not ten oh five PM.
Those who have necessary corrections?
Those of you who I had.
Okay, grab a second or then move. I have moved by trustee, you can have a second, by trustee Carter, for the necessary corrections.
Comment, yes. In terms of that seventy-seven dollars that, um, I say it was a monthly increase, I would like to clarify through contact with the company because I remember the contract that I read and the contract that was presented to the mayor as we talked about that monthly increase of seventy-seven. If it is a one-time, I will happy, I will be happy to correct the minutes, but if not, they will see it as presented.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I actually, when I looked at my notes and saw the discrepancy, I went back and checked the video and, uh, the video that I saw backed up my notes, but please feel free to check. I can't imagine that they would accept and they would eat a monthly ongoing difference because then, then they would want us to pay that seventy-seven a month because that adds up.
You have a question?
I got a comment. Um, on this particular, uh, August sixth minutes, uh, I noticed on here on page, I guess this is page three, the mayor, uh, responds to his comments, however, he starts, uh, he responds to one comment here. However, you got three or four different areas, but he only responded to one. So it seems like it's incomplete, just, just observation. It seems like the comments were incomplete because if you go back above, if you go back above, there's a couple of comments, you have, uh, comments from one, two, three, four, five, six people, but you only have respond from the mayor, which is only one. So we need to, uh, you know, not look like we're trying to find everybody, you know, have something. Comment, add comments to everybody.
Okay, so you're saying that six people, which I'm looking here, responded, but I'm going to respond to back to one or two?
You only responded to one, I said responded to comments, and it's only one I hear that you responded.
Usually if it's something that I'm going to respond to, it's something that we're gonna do with our personal evidence.
Well, it should, it should be noted in comments. Mike, I, I do believe the mayor said he don't respond to social media, he, he generally says so. I'm, I'm just, that's my comment.
Okay, but we're not going, we're not going to debate this part. If you feel that, um, what you're saying is not in there, then you have the right to vote against the minutes. Um, but we're gonna go back and forth, I don't know when the clerk, I think she distributed this Friday. Oh, Sunday, okay, so we have Monday, Monday and Tuesday. But, uh, we're not going to debate it back to back right now, but, um, this is duly noted. And, um, the motion that's on the floor now is for the first two items that, uh, first two items that trustee, uh, Zupan put in the, that's what the motion was. Now you have a question on the content of the, um,
No.
You have a question of the content of the minutes. So there, that would have to either be a different one, or you could vote this one down and vote that one, but you can't, I can't vote two separate, um, instances that you're, that you're, that you're discussing. One has something to do with what's not said or what's been put in. Now you're saying the same, because some of them are not, yes.
This, uh, my comment was that we, uh, there were six comments made by the public, okay? And there's only one comment that is right there. I'm saying that we should have five other comments included with the, uh, public comments. Uh, the mayor said just speak on one item, he speaks, he spoke on all six of them. So I'm saying it should be included. I'm not trying to debate or anything, I'm just saying if you're gonna ask one person a question, you should have something, and the mayor didn't respond, put it there, the mayor didn't respond. Let's, you know, let's be fair, that's over, you know, that's, that's my comment.
Okay, well, the motion on the floor, we'll, we'll deal with that on first. And, uh, I hope from now on that we can get these, uh, questions and, um, concerns to the clerk before we have a, you know, have a meeting, then hopefully she can address them at that time, or at least bring them up to, to the board. And thus hopefully back to, but she's changed. So we can, I, she, I can make sure that we can get these minutes to you a little quicker. Hopefully by Friday that you have time to address that at the time that, um, that you get them.
Brother's phone. Go travel around the Carolina states. Go travel around in candlelight. Travel around into Carolinas. Go around all the schools, Wagner, Charlesburg, Rico. All of them looking officials and the residents. I'm asking you in my time. Look at the lights up in the blocks. Drive pushing all of the blocks that have absolutely no lights. Look at all of the residents who have all of this garbage. You have moved in their front yard, garages. I sat in front of a school today and looked across the street at a house. I could not believe people literally lived in that house. I'm not believing St. Paul Street is gone. But I'm just praying for Salk Village and praying for these local officials. And I wish you all would just make it a part of your due diligence. Residents, this is one of these local officials. Just drive through your village and look around at where we live in our community. The village of Salk Village that's made up of municipality, churches, and schools. Thank you.
Debbie Williams, good evening. Um, this has been said so many times, but I don't think we ever got an installation. Every account's payable. There's seventeen hundred dollars out here for Dr. Salk. Now, Mike's fraud, I'm sorry. Do we have the police negotiations every week? Because she gets paid eight hundred and fifty dollars every week. And I don't think we missed an accounts payable where she didn't get paid for police negotiations. Now, when I used to be clerk, we had police negotiations maybe once a month, two or three times a month, maybe one month and then not again for the next two months. But it seems to me like we have police negotiations every week. At least according to the accounts payable. So I'm real confused. Can we justify that? Because I heard that it's probably going into arbitration. So are they actually meeting every month? That's my question. And I know a lot of people have asked this question, but I don't think I've gotten an answer yet. I don't think any of us have. So my question is, we see this on every accounts payable, eight hundred and fifty dollars every week. How often are the negotiations? Are they really meeting once a week? And they still haven't come up with anything? Because if we're paying her eight hundred and fifty dollars a week, who else are we paying while we're negotiating? Who couldn't pay her police officers? Thank you.
Maria Someto, I'm here again to talk about social media. I know you don't want to hear it. Mine isn't a question, mine is just a statement. So at the end, when you're pretending you're answering questions, you don't need to say I don't talk about social media because you refuse to fix the problem because you keep saying that you have no control over your family or your employees. But yet you feel that you have control over the citizens by telling them they can't come up and talk to social media. Well, you're wrong. And obviously, you don't listen to yourself when you talk. When you sit up here and tell the residents they can't talk about social media, and then you tell us that you can't control your employees. You sound a little bit like you're not out there. But that's it, that's my comment out here. Every week talking about social media because it's wrong. You were given an ordinance. That ordinance should have been taken seriously and for all your board members as well. That's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Petting Couch. I'm here again to talk about wild dogs running loose in our village. This has been brought up numerous times. We need the dog catcher, or we need somebody that has a vehicle that they can come out and pick up these dogs. Since I was here last week, that same dog, believe it or not, was on my porch after me. And I had my baseball bat, believe me. But if it got me, nobody'd find me till the next day. But that dog was loose four times since last week. The chief isn't here, I know he's quite busy, but I had discussion with him last week. I assumed that Cook County was going to come and relieve that problem, but they haven't been there yet. But that dog is vicious. Now, when that dog was on my porch at eleven twenty-two P.M., and I had just gone out on my porch and turned my porch lights off because I have Christmas lights on my porch. If I had been just a few minutes later, they probably wouldn't have found me till morning because nobody would know I'd be laying out there. That bothers me. And how many other dogs are running loose in our town? Do they have licenses? Do they have their baby shots? But we don't have anybody to check on them. Uh, the other issue that I brought up last week, I've been by there now several times this week. That house still has a beautiful blue tarp that separates the two neighbors. It's got a beautiful blue tarp that is their fence. Now, I don't know why they would put a blue tarp up there. Another color would have been less noticeable. But they are running some kind of a business with all the cars that are up on Jax, which they are still, there's a minimum four to five cars parked in that driveway. Now, the kids are running around there after school. And when they come by that house, who's to say that if they're out there with those cars, somebody could get hurt seriously? So that's just another issue that hasn't been dealt with since last week.
All right, um, let me just start with the first one. Um, appreciate the comment from the gentleman. Sorry, I was thanking our other board director for his mouth attention. I'm sure that, um, you know, it's, and I appreciate that because he does try hard even though a lot of people see that we're not on their shoulders, we're not doing anything. As far as the four-year, I'm concerned, I have passed that duty's on. I have a person that took the class, has a certificate. So therefore, at this point, I will not be doing it. I was doing it because it was frustrating at the time rather than not do anything. I had to take, had to take that and take care of that. So your four-years will be answered by a person now that's at the, uh, the credentials, which I never took the class. Um, but I tried to answer as many four-years as I possibly could. Tried to answer them all. Um, as far as being electronically taken care of, I mean, if we have it in paper form, um, as far as electronically, uh, being, being done, I had to look into whatever that four-year was to see if it can be done electronically. But if we gather information and just go for all four-years, and we gather that information and we have it in paper form, we don't have the time to take that, scan it, and then put it into a, a drive because we have something different. Um, four-years that have to take care of, so I believe a full-time person gets to take care of four-years. So I try to have them available. And you will get an answer. They will be available. And if they're available as paper form, come up and take them up, sign them, and you can take them. So it's not that they're not being done, but it may not be in the form that you wanted. And if you want to change that, then you can take them and scan them and put them into electronic form if you want to do that. Um, I'm sorry to hear that you feel, that someone feels that the front office people are being disrespectful. I will address that question, that issue, because I don't want to hear that people are being disrespectful when residents come up and try to do business. So that's the first I've heard, that the front office personnel is being disrespectful to someone. So that part I will, um, address. And hopefully, if it happens again, please come and tell me and let me know about it because that's something I take at heart because they're here to serve the residents of the village. Um, as far as the leaves are concerned, the program is over. And I'm sorry to hear that, that down Peterson Street was not included in that. Uh, however, uh, you know, I, I will talk to, uh, the powers that be, people that are responsible, to see if anything can be done. I'm not sure how far down Peterson Avenue. I do drive around and kind of look at what's going on. So I will address that issue, uh, very, very soon. And then I guess cars are parked on the street at a, um, garbage day.
It wasn't a garbage day. It came in the day, the day after garbage day.
And you're saying that the, uh, leaves were still there again? I will look at that because if the leaves were there, they, they shouldn't have picked up the date by the, by the, um, deadline. And leaves were put out after the deadline, then, then they're yours, they're yours to be taken care of. We have a deadline, that's what they have a deadline, that the leaves will be out at that particular time. If they're not out there. Do you want me to continue?
You're saying they were there after the deadline.
But we're not going to go this far between, I've said it many times, I'm not going to go back. Why would I give you that?
You're saying things that are not correct.
As far as the tax levy question, I will explain the tax levy. At the time, when we having, um, presentation or explanation and also the resolution, um, we did go over the tax levy last, uh, committee meeting. And I thought everyone was kind of, uh, understanding with that. Uh, but I will explain it again, uh, tonight and, uh, about the tax levy. And I'll also explain, I don't know where someone got that there's going to be new taxes, but I'm not, I, I don't understand that part because there are no new taxes. As a matter of fact, there's going to be some tax cuts. Um, accounts payable. It's amazing that before I became mayor, our law bills were five, six hundred thousand dollars there. Yes, I was upset. Yes, I used to talk about it every, every time we had one. I found out that some of that was things that the lawyers were doing. Part of that was from, um, negotiations. Our last negotiation that we had with the police department cost the village a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just from negotiation, not nothing else, just to negotiate for the police department. Thus, the, uh, person that do negotiations, we have two, I'm sorry, we have three different things going on right now. Um, two of them are negotiation. One of them is a lawsuit that's, that, that's, that's going through right now. And yes, that's for ten hours a week. And I saw someone putting in ten hours a day. No one negotiates ten hours, I'm not even getting ten hours a day. So if that was ten hours a day, that would be ten times up to fifty hours a week just for just that. It's ten hours a week. And a lot of times, work is being done from home because questions are being asked. So if they feel that that's inadequate, like I said before, our lawyer bills used to be six and seven hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't think we even going to make two hundred thousand this year. And I'm still trying to bring that down. So to say that we're spending all this money, we're not spending nowhere near. Because if I had to hire a lawyer to do our negotiation, this lawyer's going to get involved at the end when most of the stuff is taken care of because a lawyer has to get involved. But to ask the lawyer at every turn, how much, you know, what do we need? Can you do this? Can you do that? I, if I did a person, if I asked them out to negotiate and get everything, take care of their residence to a lawyer, because they're going to charge anyway. But to have them here all the time, have them here, asking questions on the phone, that's where a lot of money was ran up at that particular time. And I don't feel that we need to do that, that we need to have someone on top of what's going on with the negotiation because, as you can see, we have things that are going on and they're still slogged, the negotiation. And that's all I'm going to talk about. I'm not going to expound on the, um, what's, what's happening in the negotiation because it's still in with the negotiation. Um, the wild dog situation, I will bring it back up to the, um, chief. And as far as code, as far as the house, uh, code has told me, and I'm sorry, I'm surprised no one got back with you about that, but that has been addressed. And that's all I'm going to say about that part of it. That, that particular house that has the blue top on it, that particular problem has been addressed. Okay, that being said, I'm going to item number six, the mayor's report. Have a couple items. Um, first of all, we have a, um, proposal, only got one. And, uh, this is from Robinson Engineering for the road, the railroad spur that was being funded by, by the government. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I think it is. Three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, we have, this business has been always centered through S.S.M.A., centered through I.M.L. in there. Um, um, offered to answer anybody that would like to bid on this particular contract and get the work done. In order to move with this project, in order to get the project, you have to have the due diligence of a engineering company to look at the rail spur. And that's what the money that we got a grant for will be used for to pay to get this particular study done. Once that study is done, you have it in hand now, it's what they call a study ready. And if somebody wants to come into the village and do business in the village and, and put a hand down, be part of a rail spur, everything else has been taken care of because through this grant, the, um, engineering work was, um, has been, um, addressed and taken care of. Yes, it is, it's special. And that has, that has to be done. So we were lucky enough and, and, and due diligent enough to get this three hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars, um, to get this done. And then now, once we have this done, it's going to take a while to do it. Anybody wants to come in, any business wants to come in, has already, has taken care of it. Then see in, which is the railroad that, that works off that spur would be the one that they would go to. But the work is done and then quite naturally, put the spur itself up there, two million dollars. But if they're willing to do that for a business, the business is willing to come in. And, um, a lot of them have it in this, at least this particular part of it will be taken care of. So at this time, I will, um, open up the, um, I will open up the, man, this has been, this date stamped, December eleventh, that's today at three twenty-four, um, P.M. And this is the only one. Don't ask me why is this only, um, particular bid that was brought into the village? This was something that we talked about, but I'm not there.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to let you know and let the board know that this is not an actual bid. This is a request for, um, basically information from the engineer.
Oh, okay.
Qualifications, it's an R.F.Q. So the qualifications are for the engineering firm are in there as well as a outline for the, uh, proposed work to be done. So there's no actual amounts bid, it's just for informational purposes. So, um, a- as it said in the original, uh, R.F.Q., R.F.I. that we put out, um, we'll go ahead and go through those, or actually just go through that one. Um, that was submitted and if it's, uh, it meets the criteria, um, we will recommend to the village board and to Cook County that that would be our check. Cook County will also be reviewing this as well and will be making a recommendation.
Okay, so then all, all they were doing is just opening this up?
If you would, just announce to the record that there was only one, um, one received from Robinson Engineering, and that should suffice.
Okay, yes, this is from Robinson Engineering. Um, yeah, this is the phase one, engineering study and services. Are these supposed to, are each one of these separate?
No, they're technically three separate. They're quite three separate. I'm counting on the ability and one would be right.
Okay, um, oh, it's three sets, okay. All right. Then these will go on record and, uh, I'll present this to you. And then when you get through, we need to present it back to the board so they can, uh, kind of review it before we go into further. Um, the next issue that we have is a, um, there was a roundtable discussion last Sunday, December the second, at, um, and we were fortunate enough to have it here in the village. It was at Grace United Church of Christ. Reason for that being that there was a congressman that's in charge of Homeland Security happened to be here in town that was attending the church. So Congresswoman Robert Kelly asked to have it at, at this particular church. Um, and, um, it was, I attended it and I pleased Chief D. It was very informative about, um, Homeland Security. We got to meet the guy that was going to be represent the, um, U.S. Congress for Homeland Security, Bernie Thompson. And, um, it was very informative. We started to ask some questions about some of the things that unfunded mandates. And, um, as I stated before, it was a question and answer period. And it was, it was very, it was very informative. I mean, the last time we saw Homeland Security come to the village, I'm sure about those that are here, remember when, when the water, um, I call it the water incident came about. They actually came out at that time. That was the last time we saw, I asked questions about that too. But I also asked questions about the unfunded mandates that we have that are going to be thrust upon us and one of them being our radios. They're claiming that our radios that the police and fire use will be outdated within the year and those radios are six thousand dollars each. So I'm asking to see if we can, at this estate or the county or even the government can help us, um, try and give us some money because they are the ones that mandated that these radios be upgraded. So we're, we're working with them to find out. Glad I was able to meet this particular person, Congressman Thompson, and let him know firsthand, if you want to know what we need, those are some of the things that we need the federal government to help us with. And that's one would be the radios that they're mandating that we take care of. Okay, if that's all that I have, um, village clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things that I would like to address this evening. Um, one of them, which is quite exciting, I'll start with the positives first. Um, on the back table on the resource table, you will find the actual flyer to be distributed to the residents regarding the holiday cheer. What was presented before was the bag letter asking you all to please come in, deposit money, our deposit group and or money for, um, the Christmas cheer and holiday bags. We are still collecting. However, we still need to get the word out so that our residents would know that on December the twenty-second, uh, they can come here from five to seven. We're planning on small social and we'll be distributing the holiday food baskets. I'm very pleased to report that I sent a letter to Strack and Mantle, the Chair Bill, and they responded yesterday by saying, well, if you come in by two o'clock, three o'clock today, we'll definitely make it worth your while. And they donated fifty bags of non-perishable goods. They weren't necessarily items that we had requested, you know, to make that meal, but you know, we thank them tremendously. And we would also like to thank Director Joe Misslady because he jumped in the car and went and got them for us. Because I know that I might have been able to do it. So I greatly appreciate it, but know that it's not too late for you to come in to assist. And it's not too late for you to bring canned goods. And it's not too late for you to bring donations, financial donations as well. I thank you for that. Now I'm going to address, um, minutes. Because quite a few have some unrest where these minutes are concerned. And I think that maybe monthly I will share with you for, as reminders, that minutes are a summary of what took place. I'm not going to talk about someone who came and told us about a girlfriend who went to the hospital because she thought she had lupus, but she didn't have lupus, she had something else. I'm not going to write all of that in minutes, nor, I'm not going to do that. A summary of that, that she talked about the illness that her girlfriend had is sufficient for our minutes that deal with the village of Salk Village. Okay? Because we can't do anything about the child for being in the hospital. Another thing, we all know that our mayor responds to public requests at the end now of all of the questions and answers. He does not answer all of them. And if he does not say, I'm not going to answer or no report, then I'm not going to put it in the minutes. People, no, come on, now, let's be real. We're getting bogged down on some items that does not need for us to be bogged down on. If you look at that agenda, it is very robust. And we are here talking about six people commenting, but the mayor didn't make six comments. No, he does not make six comments all the time, it's the mighty six. Let's keep everything in perspective. Now, we have one more thing to say and then I am going to give up the mic, even though I've never mic, mic, I've never had a mic that I didn't like. Um, trustees, I'm going to draw your attention to the resolution relative to the calendar for two thousand nineteen. And please forgive me for the errors that I made on it. At the top of it, on the back side of the blade, instead of it saying two thousand nineteen, it says two thousand eighteen at the very top, even though where the actual calendar is, it says two thousand nineteen. This is a draft. All of your ordinances, resolutions, they're all drafts. By the time they're actually drafted, they are polished. They are together. You can trust me. So know that as you're voting on the calendar, it's for the two thousand nineteen. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Village Engineer, uh, Mrs. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. We have been exploring options for the culvert repair or replacement proposed for the two thousand nineteen M.F.T. road reconstruction program. We will be preparing cost estimates for this work to determine what the scope of the program will be fit within the budget available. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got a comment, a question. What, what is the culvert, um, repair replacement proposal? What is that? What area is that? What, what is that?
There's a culvert, um, uh, two hundred and twenty-first, two hundred and twenty-first, that's deteriorating, uh, so it needs to be repaired or replaced. It's a big storm pipe. The Lincoln Lanes and Graves ditch flows through it underneath the roadway.
That's it? Okay, you have five departments. Captain Diddy Sinnerwood?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Over a period of November twenty-sixth through December fifth, our department responded to sixteen calls. There were four flare alarms, three vehicle accidents, one ambulance assist, two box alarms, two seal alarms, three foot layers down, gas leak, and a diner fire. Our banquet breakfast would be successful. Children were able to sit at families' bed while parents and grandparents took pictures. Plan members were there to pass on books and we thank them for that. Uh, we want to thank everyone for keeping, uh, for staying fire safety conscious and for helping us keep that brief threat. Uh, please check on your neighbors, especially during cold weather. We'd like to wish everyone a safe and Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous year. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Public Works, Director with Kellam Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the last two weeks, we've had several warm outbreaks. Uh, eighteen thirty-six, two twenty-second, we had two. Nineteen thirty, two twenty-first, one, two twenty-first in Chapelle in the street. Uh, the main and the T at eighteen thirty-six were hit in the evening very bad. So we had two horses and parts a few days later, left the hole open, dug it bigger and replaced the ma, a section of main about eighteen feet, the T and the hydrant at deprecation. And the work, the final work will be dealt with in the spring, um, the driveway and the landscaping. Uh, and Mayor, we did report that we were done with the program. We actually have one day left. the program. We actually have one day left. Um, we got given one more day by the, uh, scavenger service. It'll be tomorrow and it is for the section between, uh, Peterson and Jeffrey over there and that side over there. We didn't finish that whole section. And we have two piles in Torrance Avenue that have to be picked up. So that will be the completion. Uh, we will go around and check some areas that may have been passed, but everything had been gone through at least one time. We're trying to get through at least a couple more times in some of the sections that just didn't work out with the weather. Um, and as the matter of the, uh, days of the week that we pick up, one day a week is garbage pickup and we have, uh, almost a month of pickups for the program. We can't stay exactly on track. The dates for the garbage dates are going to give us more time when there's nothing on the streets. Uh, we hope that residents don't park on the piles, but unfortunately some of these extend past the date. It's not exactly day for day in each section. It doesn't work out that way. And leaves fall when they fall. So we have to wait for all that to happen. Um, staff has also been out, um, putting up the new Christmas tree and, uh, hopefully, uh, some of the decorations we have, we're going to put up, but hopefully within, uh, some of the, um, money that we're going to hopefully receive here, we'll be able to purchase some new upgraded ornaments and a new, uh, cross and wreath across Salk Trail. Uh, that'll be down the line. Um, we're still continuing with small jobs at the village hall, the fire department. We've got some heater issues at, uh, at the village hall or at public works. Um, at the fire department, we had an issue with some, uh, motion sensor eyes in their doors, which they took care of. There's an issue with plumbing at the police department and there are ongoing issues. Um, and we also are cleaning up some of the locations, some of the buildings, uh, some of the, bringing some of the vacant rooms. Um, staff has also been out, uh, they will be out, uh, patching puddles, uh, the next few days and next week. Um, if any resident does see any from their house that we had passed, uh, please call up the village hall and we'll get back as soon as possible. Um, staff is also will be out, um, picking up the large branches. Any piles, uh, small piles of branches, we asked that you put into your garbage, uh, for the scavengers to pick up. They'll take them all where along, just in your garbage can. Just put a few in there. But if they're bigger branches, we will have people out and they will be picking up the bigger, larger branches. And there are a few trees that are laying in the park that we have not gotten yet, that will pick, they will be picked up. Um, the last item here is also, uh, we had some members out, uh, 223rd Street. Um, last couple of weeks, it's been a lot of garbage on 223rd Street, uh, Torrance Avenue between, uh, Rickover School and 223rd Street, and then the Carolinas Drive, which is by 394 by the highway. Uh, we're just asking the neighbors if they see people throwing garbage. So please describe to them what they're losing. They're losing money out of the pocket every day. They have to pay us and pick that up. And all they have to do is go to garbage can. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, but I'm going to jump on the bandwagon about the leaves because Deer Creek was missed as well. And because I've been out there looking at my leaf bough every day.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to reiterate the comment I made to Kevin last week, although you guys weren't here. But if you guys did an outstanding job, uh, 221st Street, we had the big, um, water main breaks there and, uh, a lot of the residents over there gave us a call and, uh, what they did with calling, they was, you know, they were very appreciative of, uh, you guys came here, 221st Street, you did an outstanding job. And I, I can't say it without, I saw the, 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 over there and they said it was outstanding, you know? So they, it seemed like the day was worked with you guys and, you know, it gets worked out and it was like outstanding. It really was. And I really appreciate it.
Okay. Um, before we get to the last one, I forgot that the police chief did have a report. I didn't want to put this into the record. I did mention some of these things, but the numbers that you put into the record and, uh, in the period of November 28th through December 11th, the police department received 518 calls for service. Police arrest summary during that same period saw the police department have a total of eight arrests. Um, and then the, uh, the people that were, I didn't take, um, attendance, but obviously the chief did, that roundtable discussion that was held on the second of December at Grace United, um, in attendance was the Congressman, um, Bernie G. Thompson, who was the chairman, uh, also State Representative Will Davis, um, Mayor Sheila Chalmers from Madison, Police Chiefs from Dixmoor, Glenwood, Baywood, Park Forest, and Richmond Park. Uh, and then, uh, they, like I said before, they touched on numerous subjects, uh, availability of surplus equipment and government grants and, um, immigration. Just wanted to put that into the record.
Mr. Mayor, what, what did, uh, were we invited?
That was, no, I didn't, I didn't even find out about it until the last minute. It was, I, as I stated, I didn't find out about it until, um, the last minute. I was going, I was at that church and they were supposed to have a meeting right after. Because the person that was in charge of Homeland Security happened to be here from Mississippi visiting family and, um, Robert Kelly, uh, I guess orchestrated that at the last minute because it was hopefully, you know, and, um, Madison. But it was the last minute and I was, I was looking, I was trying to call my chief to let him know to come and he had found out about it at the last minute as well. So like I said, I didn't even know. If I had known, yes, I would have loved, because it was very, very informative. I mean, there's a lot of people from, um, obviously people that follow whoever, um, Congresswoman Kelly, um, they came and it was some, some people that were concerned about different things in immigration. There was a lot of concern about immigration. So, but, um, the next act was like that happened. I'm hoping I get enough, um, advanced notice that I can let everybody know. Uh, item number F, I can have Development Director, uh, Joseph Gluzewa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Uh, the ordinance, the forward ordinance that was previously presented, which calls for amendment to 14-24 of the property maintenance code. The amendment was recommended by the village board's ordinance committee and calls for an increase from $50 to $75 for all reoccupancy applications. The board previously discussed this ordinance. However, after, uh, discussion with Trustee Todd, we decided to delay the implementation of the fee, um, to allow for proper notice to everyone. So therefore, the fee increase will become effective February 1st, 2019. The board also has before it the ordinance amendment to village's stormwater management. Uh, we discussed this ordinance last week and, um, this brings the village into conformity with the mandates of FEMA, which take effect in February of 2019 also. Uh, staff and legal counsel recommend the board approve the ordinance. Uh, the board also has before it a resolution which supports the renewal of a class eight property tax incentive for 21751 Jason Rasmuson Drive, which is owned by VHE Two Salk LLC. Um, this is the, um, original, um, WSI building on Mark Holmes Drive. Kind of going around. So when you go to that corner, it's the first building I've ever left there, um, wigged. Um, as we discussed, uh, staff and legal counsel recommend the board approve this resolution. Um, I'd also like to take this opportunity to both wish to Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the board, and the residents, all my colleagues, a very happy Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, joyous new year ahead as we won't be meeting here again until January 8th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Joe, Joe, in, um, this particular, um, area that we're trying to vote on tonight, and this is located in Tiffrey?
The, for the class eight, uh, renewal, that is in Tiffrey, yes, in the logistics center.
I mean, just, I'm just, do you know how much has there been in improvement in the last 10 years for Tiffrey related to this particular? Do you have to use, like, any, uh, improvements to Tiffrey for this particular company facility?
Well, the, the building is about, roughly about 700,000 square feet. Um, it's currently, uh, was vacant for a little bit at the time. Um, it's currently occupied by, um, Pratt Industries, which is a cardboard, uh, paper manufacturing recycling company. Um, they're based out of, um, Valprezo, Indiana. Uh, this is one of their satellite office or locations, if you will. Um, and then it's also occupied, again, it was vacant because if you remember, uh, WSI moved and bought the property to the west over there. But now they're reoccupying that property because they've run out of space in their existing facility. So as far as improvements, um, it's, it's been building, um, but it has been reoccupied.
Okay. But that's what, the whole tip, the 700 square feet. What, the food must have, uh,
Well, that's, that's, sorry.
For the class eight, for the class eight, what, I'm looking for the application process and they had to say they were doing something.
Right. So originally, originally that was a field. So when DP Partners made the application and built that as a spec building, okay, they came here back in 2004 and put that building up. Uh, when they originally put that building up and planned that building out, it was just a spec building. So it sat empty for a number of years as they paid taxes on it. Um, so it sat vacant for a while until the, uh, VHE Two, uh, came in and purchased the building from DP Partners. And that's when the class eight actually took effect.
That was like 10 years ago.
That was, uh, 2008.
So 2008, but I'm saying this particular property hasn't had any improvement to that building since 2008? They haven't done anything since 2008?
I mean, I don't know if they've, they've done anything additional. I would imagine that they have done improvements because as the, the building became occupied, they would have had to have, you know, they had to done build outs and whatnot within, in the inside of the building. So as far as the outside of the building, you know, it's, it's a huge building.
So we don't, we don't know if there was any improvement made to, uh, the warehouse specialty, I think that's what you call it. So we don't know, they got the break in the taxes, but we don't know what improvements are, if there is, has been any break in the taxes for, uh, warehouse specials. Do you, do you know that?
Well, the, the tax benefit does not go to the tenant. The tax benefit goes to the property owner.
So, so you're still not asking my question. Has there been any improvements to the warehouse specialty since 2008?
I, I think you're confused. I think the...
No, I'm not confused. So I'm asking a specific question. Has there been any improvement to the warehouse specialty since 2008?
Yes, they actually moved, moved to the, the property and purchased the property to the west. And now they reoccupy a portion of that property. So they moved out and now they've, they've rented the space that they moved out of.
Okay. So when we get this particular property, uh, the warehouse specialty, okay, so they're asking for renewal of class eight, okay? So therefore they get like a 10% reduction in taxes or something like that?
Right. The, the actual, it's not a 10% reduction in taxes. It's probably more like a 60% reduction in taxes when you factor it out. Under the class eight, um, the, it's, the, the actual assessed value that they go by goes from 25% down to the residential rate of 10%. And it's taxed at that same rate as a residential rate. So it's not like they're not paying taxes. They're paying a huge amount of taxes on the property.
Do, do you have any idea how much they're getting?
Probably about 700,000 dollars is what they're paying.
For that single building? I mean, for the warehouse special?
Yes.
They get 700,000 a year?
That's what they pay. Right.
And that, that money goes back into the tip?
That's correct. If they didn't have that, they'd be paying about 1.7.
For this one?
That's correct. And frankly, they'd probably be in a different location, not Indiana.
A year. Do we have anything that's up to this?
Um, Cook County does.
Okay.
Thank you, Blueberry.
Yes, sir.
Reports to trustees and standing committees and cabinets. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernie Spurrow.
Again, I want to thank, uh, Kevin for, uh, outstanding job for the, uh, 221st Street, uh, water main breaks. Uh, secondly, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of concerned or, or it, it seems unbelievable that we would get 700,000 dollars for, um, in property taxes for that particular area. Uh, it's, it's, I don't know, it, it may be true. I don't know, but it sounds a little, uh, disconcerting to me. Uh, with, with that, uh, only other thing I want to say, again, I want to emphasize the point that, uh, Ms. Suffin, Dr. Strauter, and the lab group has not been brought before the void for the vice consent and, uh, it's illegal. And, uh, I like to put that on the record here. And, uh, we need to address that issue. Also, again, with that, uh, operational transfers, we haven't got anything in writing addressing operational transfers. So with that said, that's in our report.
Budget Finance Committee, Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report.
Housing and Government Relations Committee, Trustee Cecil Tate. Orders Review Committee, Trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Orders Review Committee met in the beginning of December and we're working on a 1050 billion ordinance and right now it's at the attorney's. Once we get it back, we'll have our committee review it. We'll probably have to do a special meeting because the fire department really wants to get this done because we're limited on our meetings that we're having here for the board. Uh, once I get that back, hopefully it'll be on the agenda next week. And then I'm going to have, um, Danny Sennowitz will then present it to the committee on the whole because he can explain the 1050 billion. Um, and I just have a couple of comments. I see on, on, uh, our agenda, you have community outreach again. And I know I've brought this up several times about our ordinance from standing committees. And this is not part of our standing committee. So if it's not going to become part of the standing committee, it should not be under our standing committee, um, on the agenda. So if you want to change that, if you want, you know, you can bring it before the Orders Review will review it and add it to the standing committee. Also, uh, I know we're getting ready to vote on, um, the calendar. And I've suggested this several times and then I let it go and I was, I'm going to bring it up again. I, I believe this board should go down to two meetings a month. Um, it would save the taxpayers money. There's times we really don't have a lot for the agenda. It would also give us time to research what we need to research. Um, and that's my suggestion to two meetings a month. You could do one committee on the whole and then have a board meeting, um, the, uh, second Tuesday or, or whatever. Um, the other thing that I'm going to burn off, and Mr. Mayor, could you please, because I do not want to put a FOIA in for this, I don't feel that I should, the email that was sent to HR about the employees, the background checks, fingerprinting, I still don't have an answer. So I'd really like the answer by tomorrow. Otherwise, I'm going to be forced to submit a FOIA, which I don't feel that I should have to do. Also, um, who is the new FOIA officer?
Mary Fox.
Also, I had something because I see that our finance director's not here. I realized there was an issue with the checks last week. I know we switched over to another system, but I had received several phone calls that our employees were not notified that their stuff is not direct deposited, uh, that there was an issue. So if there was return checks due to no direct deposit, is the village going to reimburse or pay for those return check fees? I was not aware, um, I did not receive a memo about the checks. I normally, um, just file my checks because I have direct deposit and I was notified, um, by the clerk that it was a live check. So I had to make sure that I took it to the bank in cash. But I really think that when you have issues like this, you really need to notify the employees immediately that there was an issue with there's no direct deposit. Now, do we need to fill out more things for direct deposit? Because we were already set up on it. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay, um, as far as the payroll, I'm sure everyone got that payroll. It was the last minute. Item that I found out about that morning, that morning being that Friday morning, I left Thursday, everything was supposed to go into direct deposit. So this particular time, we have a paper check. I was told that everybody that got it, that was getting a paper check was in the form through this apartment here. So I don't know, um, I don't know about these trustees being informed. I thought and I assumed that the trustees were informed, but if they were not, I'm sorry, that's my fault. It was supposed to have been informed that everyone would be getting a paper check that Friday morning. The paper check was delivered that Friday morning to the village. Uh, as I stated before, I thought they were going to have a direct deposit be available because... Uh, as I stated before, I thought they were going to have a direct deposit be available because uh it was being worked on that week, and I was notified that it would be um taken care of that Friday morning, but obviously, as you can see, it wasn't. So between now and next pay period, it will be uh taken care of, I have the meetings, and it will be taken care of for the next pay period. Everyone that gets the check will be getting the direct deposit, those that filled them all out. Uh, I think there's a few that still for some reason was a paper check, I'm not sure, but um no one did not not get paid, everybody got paid, so, and they got paid at the Friday, which is with payroll there, so um I don't, I'm sorry that you didn't get informed, I don't know if the other trustees didn't get informed, but it was told to inform everybody that Friday morning, that Friday morning being that eight o'clock. So I just, I don't, I thought, I thought everybody was informed, but I can't um you know, if you're saying it wasn't, I can't say that I can't, there's any issues. Uh, as far as the uh, the employee, um, background checks, if you, if you hear tomorrow, please come in and we can discuss that, but I will not discuss that.
Actually, I won't be in, but I'd like it in writing, you can either email me, because I emailed it, and I, I found that Dr. Stroud should have the decency to email me back. Because I've done it twice. So, you know, this is something I want to know, if it was done in what agency? That's all I'm asking, it could be emailed, and it would not be shared with anyone, it's something that I want to know.
Okay, that's like I said, I'll, then I'll make sure that, that um you give it right in the heart.
Okay, thanks.
Senior advisory council, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, public safety committee trustee, Bessel.
As I mentioned last week, I'll mention it again tonight, the chief's not here tonight, but he and I have been talking about setting up monthly community meetings whereby we will be meeting in here with the police, uh, whether it's him or one of the officers or one of the sergeants in the community, that will be happening starting early in the new year. Uh, and then changing gears to comments, uh, you may have noticed as you came in this evening, unfortunately, uh, for me, uh, fortunately for them, the library's doing a little bit of reorganizing and, and is no longer able to collect the plastic bags for us. So you'll notice when you come in, there are now boxes at either entrance for the plastic bag collection where we are trying to recycle and collect five hundred pounds worth of plastic bags. Those are the bags you get at Jewel, Target, and our Home Depot, all those lovely plastic bags. Uh, so instead of throwing them out, recycle them and bring them here, please, just plastic bags, nothing else. Uh, and put them in those boxes, and when I collect five hundred pounds, we're going to get a free park bench out of it. So please bring those in here, and as those boxes fill up, I take them out and I collect them and I stuff them into bigger bags and I weigh them and I collect big bags. And you guys are getting sick of me doing that because you're like, please, get your five hundred pounds and get your bench. So uh, if you please would, if you're not doing anything with your bags, bring them in here and put them in those boxes, and that ends my comments and, and thank you.
Thank you, um, community outreach, which I will be getting back with trustee Carter, Bob Sessel, because we have to write a new resolution and bring before the ordinance review committee because the name was changed from arts and rights to community outreach. But that has to be taken care of, and we have to get that ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, resolution, um, written up and then I'm just going to go to the committee that changed. But uh, trustee Carter. Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory committee chairman, Emily Farm.
Thank you, Mayor, trust me, just want to say, I have a reading from what is this Thursday, the thirteenth, the last meeting of the year for senior advisory council, and all are welcome. Also, uh, I was contacted by Cedar, and hopefully they're going to be here on the eighteenth. Uh, I bet the Cedar fires from, but hopefully I'll receive them this week. They're going to try to do the whole gate in Cedar Center on the eighteenth. And on behalf of the senior advisory council, just want to thank the mayor and all the trustees for all the support that they have given us this year, and just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's all.
Thank you. Item number ten, unfinished business, I will accept the motion for the ordinance admitting section fourteen dash twenty-four, property maintenance code adopted in division one of article two, building and technical code, chapter fourteen, buildings and built, building and building regulations of the municipal code.
You missed the accounts table.
No, that's the unfinished business, that's, that's yours.
I apologize.
And it's your ordinance, right?
Yeah, I apologize.
So move.
I'm going to jump in and have it straight here.
It was moved uh by trustee, uh, second by trustee Carter, any questions? You have, you were just explained by, uh, Mr. Roger. All right, you don't have, we, we talked about it last week, well, we didn't talk about it like that about a while back. This is the one that's wanted to, um, and I raised, he has been raising the fee for inspection.
Fifty seventy-five dollars.
Fifty seventy-five. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
That's Coria.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for approved accounts payable, Indian pound. Oh, right here. In amount of three hundred sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars two cents. Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee, uh, trustee Grant, any questions?
I just have a comment. We just received this today, which is unacceptable. Um, normally we have it on Friday, so we can go through it, and then if we have any questions, we could come in and talk about it. So I just want to make you aware of it because this is unacceptable to receive it right before our meeting.
And I apologize for that because there were some other situated circumstances that we just talked about. And that was the reason why this was late. I did speak to the people involved and they assured we this wouldn't happen anymore, so uh, hopefully we can get this done by Friday, not Sunday, by Friday before business day is out, that you can have these in your boxes by Friday. But if we had some problems last, um, weekend, we all just got to talking about it, and that's why this is kind of late going out and right with this done with that. Any other question? Yes, any other question?
Look, she was talking to. Anyway, uh, but the items on a council seat will go again, I'd like to reiterate that employees are going to get paid regardless because they have the votes. I ever, it has to be brought, every time we do a council seat, it should be brought to attention that there are people on this payroll that's not, that's not here, not uh been voted on by the board, and it's still legal. That's in my comments.
Okay, for the record, trustee, this is a house payment.
This, I know, but this is.
You said a council seat.
A council payable, this is a council payment. And if you didn't understand, this is a council payment.
You said a council seat.
Okay, whatever. I'm trying to sure everybody.
Any other, any other question? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
No.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance submitting the stormwater management of chapter twenty-six, the bracket of the municipal code of the village of Salt Village versus the flood plain.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupat, second by trustee Carter, any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you guys gave us this ordinance and it was supposed to be changed. I know that the last minute, this was a copy, I, in fact, I got it from the village clerk. But uh, no changes were made, uh, I understand that we're supposed to have clean concrete. I'm not comfortable with voting on this, we don't have, uh, everything's minded out, blacked out, that's basically saying, and um, I, you know, it's, it's just not acceptable, this, this putting anything in front of us, expect us to vote on it. It doesn't, there was some time, and I was in a rush, for them to make changes like we promised last week. Uh, the information that was promised to the uh trustees should be what we have here to vote on, and this is coming right now has all blacked out and all this stuff, it doesn't make any sense, so uh, we need uh, uh, clean concrete, the right concrete.
Any other question?
I don't disagree with them.
Mr. Justice, Mayor.
Any other, any other comments? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Is it pertaining to this? Will it change the vote?
I, I just want to explain to you, what the corporate council did when they made the amendment to the ordinance. Um, historically, all of a sudden, Sturgis provided the board with lined copies, which actually shows what's been amended or removed from the ordinance. And it also is to help for the codification process, so that's why they, they do it that way, so the board understands what's being changed um, when they're amending an ordinance. Um, historically, they've done it this way for a number of years, so when they do an amendment, the, the language is stricken, and new language is also added, which is underlined as well. So that's the rationale as to why it's done that way. Um, and it helps for the codification process when the codifiers are going through there to see what's actually changed in the text. They know what's been removed, they know what's been added, so that's why they did it that way. And they, that way the board actually knows what's going on too.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Motion is carried. The resolution requesting the Cook County clerk to apply an elevated loss and cost factor to the two thousand eighteen levy in the village of Salt Village, well, in Cook County. Uh, this particular ordinance, which was explained last week, what it is, is every time we levy for taxes, the county doesn't give us our full amount that we levy for, they always take away at least ten percent. So what we're doing is asking for that ten percent to be zero loss for our cost taxes.
Mayor, did you skip one?
Oh, I sure did. Yes, I did, um, but I'll explain this one, and then I'm going to, and I'm going to explain both of them. But this one is the one that I just got to talking about, but prior to that is the actual levy itself. And as we discussed last week, and this is the one that we, and I skipped, but uh okay, I can, um, let me go back and ask for a motion for the, one for the actual levy, which is item number six. And we'll do deep seconds. I'll ask for a motion to accept the um levy, but before that, I just wanted to go over some things because there were some things mentioned about any new taxes. As you can see, on um that you have in front of you, the um, the respect that's here in front of you, the proposed levy this year um, which, uh, which I find is two million six hundred twenty-six thousand and fifty dollars. That represents a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar change decrease, or a twenty-one point eight percent decrease of change in your property taxes. So depending on where you live in the village, it goes somewhere between four hundred dollars a year to eighty-two dollars a year, that you will see a savings on your property taxes starting next year. So we, um, we're, we're doing that now, I'm not saying that we're going to, it's going to stay that way, but right now, the next year's taxes will be reduced by that amount of money from the village. Now, real, reiterate, from the village. We have three taxing bodies in the village. This is just the one that we're, we're going to reduce, I cannot do anything about anyone else's taxing body, but we're going to reduce it by twenty-one percent, so your taxes will go down again according to where you live and how much you pay for taxes. It'll range from four hundred dollars a year to uh eighty-two dollars a year. So, and that's the first time since I've been here, and I look like it's my tax act doing it now. So, with that being said, I'll accept the motion to, for the ordinance, for the levy of assessment taxes for the year twenty eighteen for the village of Salt Village, village, counties, and Cook.
So moved.
I have a question, did we know what the taxes were?
No.
Did you go first? I, I'm okay.
Can you say it? Okay, it was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter, now, you have a question?
What was the lead we want to tell us the taxes?
Last year's taxes. Last year's taxes, did you get that? Last year's taxes were three billion three hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars, that was fiscal year two thousand seventeen, because your taxes are always a year behind. So when you pay taxes next year, it'll be based on this year. So that's how much taxes were the last time we, we uh had taxes. The new proposed will be two million six hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty dollars. Any other question?
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Kristine.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I don't know, I mean, your taxes. Um, next, next one, I, I also, I have been hesitant to say, I brought it up, is about the loss amount that we, uh, would normally lose when we're trying to apply for that ten percent. And I'll accept the motion for that ordinance, for the levy and assessment, uh, of those taxes for the loss, um that called the loss and cost factor to the two thousand eighteen tax levy for the village of Salt Village, Cook and Cook County.
So moved.
Any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
And Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Resolution of the village of Salt Village, well, in Cook County, authorizing the renewal of a class eight taxing center for the property commonly known as Jason Vesmussen Drive. Um, pin number number thirty-two dash twenty-six dash two oh one dash zero one one dash zero 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 and pin number thirty-two dash twenty-six dash one oh three dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, and second by trustee Zupat, any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item F, I'm going to wait on, remove that. Item F, I'm going to wait on, we move that until we get, after we get everything taken care of, we can bring it back up on the next meeting, the meeting of the whole next week on the 18th. So we'll have all that taken care of at that time. We can bring it up and discuss it. There's a few things brought up about that. And you already know there won't be a meeting after next week until the 8th of January. So Christmas and New Year's happens to fall in two weeks this year and next year. So next week will be the last meeting we have in, for this particular year. So just want to let everyone know that. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee, seconded by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.